Good evening. This is the Walpole Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight is Wednesday, May 1st. It is 7:01 PM. The first two cases we have are going to be continuances, so this is for case number 2025, Walsh Brothers. This is 300 Stone Street, special permit for construction in the floodplain. What is the continuation date?
June 5th.
Okay. Does somebody want to make the motion to continue this case until June 5th at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Judy, second by Bob. Any further discussion on continuing that? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained. So carried. Okay. Next, we have case number 22-11, Wall Street Development Corporation. This is on Pinnacle Drive. This is a 40B case, and at the request of the applicant, they have requested to continue. And we have a letter asking for a continuance until July 10th, and an extension of time until August 30th, 2024. Does somebody want to make the motion to continue this case until July 10th, 2024, at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall?
Can we add the extension of time?
With the extension of time of August 30th, 2024.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Dave.
Second.
Second by Tim. Any further discussion? And I'll note that board member Judy Conroy stepped down for this. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay. So, next thing we have for tonight is case number 24-4, 960 to 962 Main Street, Jalapenos Restaurant, variance under section 7.5. A of the Walpole zoning bylaws to allow a double-sided internally illuminated sign. In our packages, we have some comments. Town engineer has no comments, and the deputy fire chief says, "Please ensure building is marked with numbers after completion of exterior work to easily be identifiable as 960 Main Street. Number should be at least four inches in contrasting color to the building colors." The Board of Health has no comments at this time, and I think that's it that we have for comments from town boards or committees. So, at this point, if the applicant wants to come forward and explain what's being proposed for this variance.
Hi, my name is Ricardo Ronzoro. I'm the owner of Jalapinos. I'm inquired permission for a new sign. You can hardly see my sign, to be honest with you. And 18 years ago, when I came here, you can open the door of Jalapinos at 9 o'clock, you can see the tumble which is going by. Right now, you see the traffic from one side to the other one, so I'm missing a lot of revenue. People not seeing my sign.
So, you're requesting a variance, and for the board to give a variance, you have to explain why you should have a variance. Because really what you're doing is you're going against the existing zoning bylaws, and you have to explain what conditions.
Well, the reason why is, what I'm telling you, there's restaurants that they have the sign, and they're getting more business. As it is right now, I'm not getting the business that I used to be, and I need to make sure that the people is gonna notice that Jalapinos is there. The landlord was kind enough to put a lot of light on that hallway, but you still don't see me. You still don't see the inside of the restaurant. You still don't see, think it's a restaurant in there. With the new refacing of the building, which looks beautiful, but it's no good for me. People is not coming in and spending money on my business. I've been here for the last seven months doing this construction. People thought we were closed for renovations. People stopped coming in through the front because all the construction that was going on. A lot of people that are not from town, the town people knows that the parking lot is on the back, but on the front, they don't know what's going on on the back, so I don't know what a better explanation I can give you. I need to support my business, and I need to support employees that I have too.
Okay. Judy.
I just had a question on the design. Is this a sign that's gonna have light inside it?
Inside the sign. And then actually, the part that it says authentic, we just switch it to say Walpole.
Okay. And John, I have to ask this. The variance is because it's an illuminated sign?
Yes.
Okay. Did you consider a not interior illuminated sign?
I have two spotlights.
But have spotlights?
I have two spotlights, but still, that's the most that I can do according to the building inspector, and you still cannot see it. You still cannot see it. If you need any help, I don't stay open until late. And everybody knows, after you, with a family restaurant, by 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night, we're done. The sign will be on a timer also, so it will shut up automatically. It will turn on automatically.
Okay. And so, with today's technology, like light fixtures in homes have different kinds of light, white light, warm light, LED light. Do you have that option in case the interior lighting is just Broadway Hollywood sign too bright that you can change it?
I'm still, I'm more than welcome you to drive down the street anytime you want to. You won't see that sign. You won't see that. I have two signs that have been there for a while, that the construction during the A1, Route 1, they cover completely my sign coming down from stop and shown down to the center. The other sign is, you can see it once you hit, probably when you hit the Walpole Bank.
Okay.
And I try to put a road light. I try to put different lights still.
Okay. So, I understand your request for, to help your business. Now, I have a question for Patrick. Patrick, you've been, were you on this wayfinding committee?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Does this relate or go against what the supposed wayfinding group was gonna come up with?
No, that's more, I guess, I classify that as public infrastructure, so this is private, well, it's tenant, or a tenant that, all that he really wouldn't bide by when it comes to signage is, at least from the zoning standpoint, is what we have in our zoning bylaws. So, in terms of design or anything like that, we don't go into specifics other than the fact that the zoning only prohibits internally illuminated, which is why the applicants are seeking a variance. So only externally illuminated would be the default for, by that, I mean the section of the zoning dealing with signage within the central business district.
Right.
You know, you can have internally illuminated, I think in the highway business, but that's spelled out within the zoning.
Okay. So, right now, there are many businesses that have signs that are perpendicular to their buildings. Is that correct? Does anyone else feel that way? And I have no problem with this, because I understand, I frequent the quilt shop, and you don't know they're there either, because they have a flat against the wall sign. So, there is a reason to promote the business. I guess my question is, the interior illumination, again, like I said, in a home, high hat light, there's an option in that bulb to create either the really bright white light, which this could be, or a warmer light. Do you know if your sign company has that option in case it's a little overkill? And I guess what I'm saying, and enough, I'm making myself clear.
I understand you do, but you have to understand my point of view. If you want to see it.
Well, I'm not saying you won't see it. I'm just saying, you know, I look at high beam or low beam. Is this gonna look like a high beam or a low beam? I guess, to know you're there with a nice light, or too standout-ish, I guess.
I'm just giving you feedback from people that they don't know that I'm there, or they think that I'm not open, because they cannot see inside.
So I guess, what you're trying to say, in terms of lighting, is this an LED light, or is this like?
It's LED light, yeah.
Oh, it's LED, it's not an internally boxed light?
No, it's not gonna shine no one or nothing. It's just to illuminate the sign. That's all that is gonna do.
Okay. So, that's the type of lighting?
Right.
What I've done is I've taken a look at Walpole Center and seen what is there for lighting right now, and there is, I can't think of, the only other place that I saw that had an internally lit sign was up at the CVS Plaza, out by the road over near Supreme Pizza. And it's on a pedestal. I don't even know if it lights up. It wasn't lit up at night. It's a sign that's there, but it is encased. It looks like at one point, maybe it did. Walpole Center, the bylaws have been set, and the idea is not to have lights. You can have a new sign, and you can have it as the Jalapino sign is right now, where you have external, like, lights shining on it to light it up. I think that the intent of the bylaw was not to have the glowing signs down Main Street, and we definitely want people to be able to find your restaurant, and that's, that can be done. To me, there's nothing here that you've shown that says why it rises to the level of a variance to go above what's normally allowed for signage in the central business district. Anybody else have thoughts?
There's another question, but I take it this is considered a ground sign. And in addition to the prohibition on illumination, it says it has to be set back a minimum of five feet from the street or lot line. And it looks like, from this depiction, I can't tell for sure, but it looks like it hangs over the public way there, which would be the street line. So, I guess, I guess it's hard to say, but it looks to me from the photo that it's not set back five feet from the street line, from where the sidewalk is, essentially, which is another requirement. So, and it doesn't sound like that's really that's been requested. So I don't know how to handle that. Either we need additional information about where it's situated on the lot, or, I don't think we can improve on that basis.
Obviously, I don't, how old was the sign that you had initially? Was that?
The sign has been there since it was a mogabomphin, so we're talking about 45, 50 years ago.
So that's a good point, because I just, I think, going to the zoning, we discussed what this would be, I guess you would define this kind of as a blade sign, which is a perpendicular sign to the building, which we have zoning in place for that. So, section seven is a sign regulations, subsection five deals with the central business district, and it goes through basically the type of signs. Number six is blade signs. The requirements for a blade sign are much smaller, I guess, in terms of area than would be this sign, which I would say would be a pre-existing, non-conforming sign. You know, the location, the size of it currently isn't something that you typically even be allowed as a blade sign now. I'll just, I'll read the language of that. So basically, a blade sign, if you were to do a blade sign within the central business district, which is that perpendicular sign to a building, "One sign attached perpendicular to a building, provided that such sign shall not project more than four feet from the building's surface, nor exceed five square feet in surface area. The content of such sign shall be limited to the name and or logo of establishment occupying the premises. Only external illumination of such sign is permitted." And that's, that language is for every sign in the central business district.
Right. But it doesn't look to me, based on the photo, that this is projecting from the side of the building. It looks like it's mounted on pole, on a post that projects, so that's why.
No, yeah, and I think that's what I was getting at with Ricardo, is that sign, I guess currently, the size of it and the location of it, it's pre-existing, non-conforming. I don't think you'd be able to build that sign or construct that sign currently under our zoning, as it is right now. At least that's how it's written within the zoning bylaws.
He's asking for a new sign though, right?
Yeah, but what he's seeking though, is not just a new sign, but a variance to have that sign be internally illuminated.
Yeah, in fact, Mark, I think that if he was just putting up a replacement sign with external illumination, we wouldn't be here. You know, do you agree with that, Patrick?
Yeah, it's, you know, he's allowed to obviously have the sign he has, even though it's non-conforming, but it's only the, you know, the fact that it's internally illuminated, and he needs to seek a variance, that's the only reason he's here. He's allowed to obviously have a sign that size because it's pre-existing, non-conforming.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Sorry. If that's the case, then wouldn't, you know, is a variance necessary? Wouldn't it be an analysis of whether or not a change to a pre-existing, non-conforming structure is permitted? I mean, I guess I'm confused about the...
Yeah, so it's... Essentially, yeah, he's allowed to seek that variance and keep his sign of that size.
But he's modifying the sign.
But he's modifying it, and that's, obviously, that's modifying a pre-existing, non-conforming sign. He can do that, but obviously, he needs to seek a variance, because that's one thing that's not even, we don't allow that in the zoning currently, for the central business district.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just wanted to double-check on the five-square-foot area, as you said. So, the sign is almost, it's 59 by 59, and it's a circle, so I'm not gonna try to do the math of what the area is. I just, it's like, yeah, so it's six by six, yeah. So is it, it's, divide that, and he's okay with that?
What?
It's the size, the blade size.
It's like 18 to 20 square feet, roughly, if it's a six-foot diameter, or, sorry, yeah. Close, it's a little less than six feet.
It's a square, it's 24, but it's a circle.
Yeah, it's a circle. Yeah, that's not my strong point.
But either way, it's existing, non-conforming, as it stands anyway, right? So it doesn't...
Yeah, so the, like, the existing sign is, I believe, similar in size. So your existing sign is at similar dimensions to what you already have?
Yeah, but the other one is the other way.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah.
Yeah.
But the size, at least, it's not larger than what you are.
No, 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 no.
Well, no. Imagine, I don't know, I didn't measure anything, but I'm not sure if that's, that top pipe is six feet, because that's what this is showing, and I think it's shorter than that. But I didn't measure it, so I don't know. And the sign that's being shown here is just almost 28 square feet, the proposal. But really, what it comes down to is, does this rise to the level of a variance? And I don't hear anything that has addressed the reasons why it meets the requirements for a variance. So, maybe one, you really have to kind of show hardship in order to qualify for a variance, and you have to have kind of exhausted every alternative.
Listen, I don't wanna waste your time. I don't wanna waste mine. I got the answer. Thank you. It's been a pleasure doing business on this town. It's 20 years, and you're gonna see me going out of business, which is not good, which is not good. And I'm not lying to you. I live in Walpole. I'm gonna lose my house. I'm gonna lose my business for a sign. So, I don't know what else to tell you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. So, usually at this point, we'd ask if the applicant wants to close the hearing, so, but I think we probably have the answer. So, does somebody want to make a motion to close the hearing?
I'm a little confused. I think Mr. Don Cerro is a little upset. I was gonna ask if he would like to come back with a different design, but he's gone. So I would like to, I think we should extend that to him, whether it's a phone call or a letter, and I would like to continue the hearing till we speak to him again. I mean, I've never had anybody walk out. Have you, John?
No.
Okay, so let's not set the tone. Got a business downtown, maybe he's struggling, maybe he's not. I don't know. But if there's another way that economic development or destination downtown can help this guy out with something better, before we deny a variance, I think we should give him that opportunity. So, I guess I'll make a motion to continue the hearing till the next available date for Mr. Don Cerro to be able to come back.
At which point, what are you asking to see, or, you know, I don't, what additional information is he going to provide on the variance?
A different design, a different location, a different hanging off the building versus a post, whether it's illuminated or not. I know that's the key, but I just don't think we should just boot him out the door, so. He chose to leave, yes he did. However, it's too open-ended for me.
You know, this is obviously, this is the board's business, but just, I guess, to interject, yeah, I could have a conversation more about, you know, what other underlying features beyond the sign, you know, we can do, or can know about, and, you know, see what happens if the board does continue, whether or not he goes forward or withdraws or something.
Right. I mean, give him a chance to withdraw.
Could he have a sign inside the restaurant, illuminated, you know, illuminated out the window? Or would he have needed a variance for that too?
In terms of outside, I believe we do allow, what I mean by internally illuminated, I mean, like, in terms of, like, open signs, there's a provision, basically, for, you know, that type of, I guess, feature.
Yeah.
But that's, I mean, that's limited. It's not the sign itself.
But even an open sign, because he was saying, people don't know I'm open. Maybe it's something that might find...
Try an open sign?
I think so. I think I asked the same question to him, like, during the application process. I said, "Could you do it inside?" I don't wanna speak for him, but I think he said that he tried that, and then he wanted to go with this option.
Okay. And I mean, I only bring up the whole, the pre-existing, non-conforming nature, because I know that's a conversation I have with the building commissioners. You wouldn't be able to build, even paint, I don't know the right terminology, but basically, a non-internally illuminated sign of that size and of that characteristics today, just from what the zoning has.
John, I think you made a point earlier that I think the original zoning, they didn't want it to be a neon valley coming through the center of town, is why the zoning is the way the zoning is.
Yeah. So, what, Judy, I definitely understand where you're coming from. I'm just trying to figure out, procedurally, I guess what we could do is, we could continue...
Well, we don't have his permission to close, nor do we have his permission to continue.
Right.
So we're kind of in the way, in the middle. So, as a board, I don't wanna speak for him to say he wants to close. He was obviously upset.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we continue until?
June 5th, because I don't think we'll have time between now and the 20th.
That's fine. Until June, until June 5th, it's a month out, and if you would, reach out to him and find out if there's something else that he wants to add or propose. So, and then if there's nothing new on June 5th, then we can move forward. Either way, you know, he will either provide some more information that can help the board make a decision, or...
We'll vote to close the...
We'll vote to close the hearing on June 5th.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay.
I'll make that motion to continue then.
Okay. Motion to, does somebody want to make a motion to continue until June 5th at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall?
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay. So, that's continued for a month out. Next case we have is for Production Road. Notice is hereby given that the Town of Walpole Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing in the Select Board Meeting Room at Town Hall on Wednesday, May 1st at 7:00 PM on an application from Ahmad Al Raffai, case number 24-5, with respect to property located at 24 Production Road, Walpole, Mass, within the industrial zoning district. Application is for a special permit under 5B14E of the Walpole zoning bylaws to allow auto sales and general repairs. Automobiles will be brought from auctions and refreshed, rebuilt, salvaged, and towed with transportation. All those are, all are invited and encouraged to review the plans prior to the public hearing and attend the public hearing. Okay. So, let's see, we have a few pieces of correspondence.
Good evening.
Okay. I want to just, just one second, I want to just read the correspondence. From the engineering department, no comments, no objection to granting relief. From the planning board, there are no planning board comments. However, this property is located within the water resource protection overlay district. And from fire, no comments at this time, and Board of Health has no comments at this time. Okay. So, good evening.
Good evening.
Do you want to explain?
My name's Ahmed, and explain, I'm opening this store, the shop, in, on Production, 24 Production Road. I would like to request permission for dealer license, class two, and hopefully I get it.
And that's a license to sell?
It's a sell, yeah, sell car, buy cars, and sell it, like, to allow me go buy from auctions cars and refurbish the car and sell it on the market. And that's what I do before. I had the class two license before, in different town. I'm from Norwood. I moved here to Norwood.
Okay. So we have a plan in front of us. It looks like a photocopy of another plan, but can you explain what area you're talking about here?
It's two bay garage. Gonna be seven parking spots in the front. It's a 2,500 square feet space inside, so a lot of cars I can park inside. I have seven, eight cars inside. I have lift inside, so do the work, park them, clean them, and get them ready to sell. That's what the idea. And signage, the requirement, whatever the required, the town requirements, we follow the, and I'll make sure before I do the sign, I get the permission from you, if it's okay, the size of the sign.
Typically, signs, that would be just a building apartment.
Yeah, you go for the building commissioner, yeah, I'm, I guess, for the board's benefit, just to explain a little bit, the site itself is, it's one parcel, three different buildings. There is kind of a pretty, I wouldn't say extensive, but there's a good history in terms of multiple uses occurring within... There is kind of a pretty, I won't say extensive, but there's a good history in terms of multiple uses occurring with those three buildings. There are auto sales currently, however, that special permit which was granted was, predates the existing zoning. It did not include repairs that would be associated with auto sales. So, yeah, I'm seeking this application because it's more or less a, it's a cleaner special permit. You know, the site has, it allowed for use probably back in the 80s that no longer are reflective in the zoning. So even though there are sales on site, they don't have sales with minor repairs, which is what the advocate's looking to do.
Online, like, people advertise online, and people come and check the cars.
Oh, yeah.
It's mostly online advertising, so.
Will people be test-driving the cars on Production Road?
On Production Road, probably yes. Probably yes. Or take it on the street, I mean, people, they have to test-drive the car.
So, just, so we're all clear, I think this comes down to a question of a use of, in the area, and you know, is this use something that can be allowed in this area? And are there any conditions that we should put on such use? That's why a special, we're talking about a special permit. Next, now, the next question I have is, what type of refund you said in the applica, or in the public notice?
Refurbish.
Refurbish, yeah, so.
Like damaged vehicles were in accidents, salvaged, buy them from the auction, fix them, sell them. Like I sold one to CarMax a couple days ago, just, it's mine, and it's from previous business, previous place I had it. So, that's how I do it. Simple business.
So what's involved with refurbishing these vehicles?
Buying parts, put it together, fixing the damage, dents, if there are dents. The painting, probably minor paint, it's not like it's gonna be, it depends what we need to do, we have to finish the whole thing, yeah.
Sorry, it said, what's there now? What's currently in the space now?
In the space, there is a car lift, one car lift, and a few cars I'm working on. Like, my own cars, I have, I have a truck for company working on it, doing some repair.
So, Patrick, is the area that we're talking about in this part right here?
Yeah, so you're looking at the marked spaces, I guess, it's the.
Heliopolis.
Heliopolis Transportation, so that 2,500 square foot.
Okay, so just that one block, 2,500 square feet?
Correct.
Okay.
Notice that the planning board mentioned that the property is located in the Water Resource Protection Overlay District, but they didn't say anything more about the significance of that. So I don't know if we know, I looked at the map, it looks like it might be in Area 4, but I, and, so, anyway, I'm not sure what the implication of it being in the overlay district.
Yeah, you're right, I mean, so if you actually are doing painting, that's something probably we should have known a little beforehand, because painting requires.
I haven't done yet, I haven't, I would, I haven't. I haven't done it yet.
Haven't had to.
I mean, I haven't done any painting, so of course, if I need, I will let you know that I'm gonna do painting, I'll get the license, special license for that, right? Or the fire department has to approve it, and.
Yeah, so from this board's purview, when it comes to painting, it requires relief because the location, your building is within our Water Resource Protection Overlay District. So essentially, there's different uses that are allowed, and then other uses that require addition, you know, relief from the board to get.
Sure, sure.
Either you're mitigating the water properly, or in this situation, what is the quantity of what we classified as toxic or hazardous materials? So, that's really information I think the building commissioner needs to know, in what you're storing paint.
I wouldn't hide anything from the town, or I'll make sure everything in compliance, like, following the town orders, like.
Yeah, no, I hear you, I think what Mr. Fissiero was mentioning is, you know, while you do need to meet with this board for a special permit for the use, so your location is within an industrial zoning district. In our town, industrial zoning district, you need a special permit for auto sales.
Sure.
So that's why you're here.
Yeah.
However, with that, you are allowed minor repairs, but when it comes to car, you know, painting.
Right.
The extent of which, that information probably needs to be known by the building commissioner, because it could trigger additional permit.
Let's, X on that painting, wooden paint there, I'll bring it somewhere else and paint, if it's not allowed. If it's allowed, then if I can request another permit, so.
Right, I think that's exactly what Patrick's saying, and we've run into this before. Would, you're asking for a use, to allow the use of repairing and refurbishing and selling cars, right? And that's what we're gonna talk about tonight. If you're going to do oil, do you ever do oil changes on the cars as they come in?
Yes.
Yeah, so, oil changes, painting?
Oil changes are looked at, I've probably let the building commissioner speak to that, because I think we had that situation come up before, whether or not that was classified under the same requirements as what paints classified.
Okay, well, we've run into it with non-dealerships. There was somebody on Renmairev who had to quantify the amount of oil that they had for their regular construction vehicles.
Yeah, but it's not regularly, like, oil change, we do it, like, maybe, I've been one month, to oil changes.
Okay.
So it's not like a huge amount of, like, jiffy lube or.
Okay, and that's the kind of question that really is going to, if you go to see the building inspector to get the permit for using, you know, hazardous materials, including paint, oils, I don't know what else, you're like, you're the car expert.
You had it randomly had the paint.
Yeah, like, it needs special permits.
Right, because we don't want those leaking into the ground and contaminating the groundwater.
No, we don't do that, we don't do that, always, like, the oil, what we do, we take it back to the, like, advance, they take the oil. Advance auto parts or auto zone, all the, like, the parts stores, they take the oil back, they recycle the oil, so we give it back to them.
I think.
It's not, that's what we do.
With that being said, those rules are in place in the event of an accident. Right, so like, if accidentally, you're doing one oil change and it.
I kind of go back to, he can seek the, obviously, the permit for auto sales, but when it comes to the oil change, if we had this pop up off of, not Fox Hill, there was another site, I cannot remember.
Was it the?
Hilltown?
No, the Bronco.
The Bronco dealership.
That was 2085 Main.
I thought it was Fox Hill. 2085 Main. I guess what I'm getting at is, in terms of what's classified as a hazardous material, that's, it's defined under Mass. General Law, Chapter 21E, and so that's usually where the building commissioner comes in, because that's his area of, basically, what do you have, what's designated? And I know usually the threshold for this, at least from the last few cases, has been when it comes to paint, because that's toxic hazardous materials as defined, that are over a certain household, or over what's a household quantity, which I think is kind of subjective, but that's.
So.
So the oil change, I guess, is what I'm getting at, it's not something that would trigger needing that relief under Section 12. The painting would.
Okay, painting clearly would. It's, the other part of this besides groundwater protection is firefighter protection to know what's in these buildings if there's an emergency. That's why, in the past, we've, it's been a condition that the applicant provides a list of, you know, what materials are being stored there to the fire department, and in some cases, the board of health, so. But we're getting, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves when we start talking about this, but it's important that the applicant understands that if you get this permit tonight, or in the future, it's for the use, but if you start doing different things there, additional permits could be required.
Sure.
Does that sound?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's.
Like painting on stuff.
Yeah, I think that's where it comes down to, which I was saying, I think, obviously, you're allowed repairs that are, fall under what would be minor, I guess, so to speak, when it comes to auto sales, but it starts to, it can change, it doesn't sound like you're become, you don't want to be like a mechanic, no one's gonna go to you for an oil change, that's not the type of business you're doing.
I'm looking for sales, like, strictly, I'm waiting for the license, that's why I'm trying to make some money right now, to make the release and all that stuff, you know? But strictly later, it's gonna be car sales.
Okay.
Tim, you know more about car sales and?
Well, but I don't know all this, these other things, but we're gonna, if we were to vote for the use, that doesn't guarantee him a dealer's license, he still has to go back to the selectmen to get a dealer's license. So we can approve the use, like you said, just for sales and light repair, but he still has to come to the selectmen to get a dealer license. Then, you talked about test-driving, he then has to go to the state to get dealer plates.
Because that's, yeah, it takes a long time, it takes like six months to get the dealer plate, it's not easy to get the.
No, I know that.
Yeah, so we need to start first, make money, and then I apply, and then wait, I'm not, I can't wait for that. You can't get the dealer license unless you have the dealer plate, I mean.
Can't get the plates without the license, right?
Yeah.
So you can't do any test-driving until you have dealer plates?
Yes, yes, you're right. You're right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You were in this business in Norwood?
I was in Dudley, Mass.
In Dudley?
Yeah.
Oh, you live in Norwood?
I live in Norwood.
Oh, we won't hold that against you, okay. So Dudley, so how long were you in business in Dudley?
Three years.
Three years, okay. And the class two license, once, if we were to grant the use, then you apply for your class two license?
Yes.
Okay. One of the requirements of the class two license is that repairs need to be performed indoors, and that there's, and there's no outdoor storage of auto parts or related materials. So you have seven spaces, so I'm gonna assume there won't be any wrecked cars parked out front?
No. No wrecked cars.
Wrecked cars, no fender, no fender bender cars out front?
No, we go one by one, we fix car, we put it outside for when it's done.
So the outside cars would be the cars that would be completed?
Yes.
And ready for sale?
Yes.
Okay.
Transparency is, because I have others, and Philip has a class two license, I'm trying to say, I'm on the land, boy.
Yes, John.
I've seen on occasions, and I don't want anything like that, if you buy a car, and it gets delivered back.
Yes, yes.
So it might be there for 12 hours, gets dropped off from the auction, and it gets it in in the morning. So to say that there's never, there's never cars, I don't allow them to store, and I don't allow them when they're there so many hours, I don't like it. But it does get dropped off sometimes when it's.
Right, okay.
This is, I mean, you can't do anything about that, yeah.
Yes.
Towed at night, you can't, you know, but we don't keep it outside, we make sure it's inside, if it's, like, inside the car, inside the bay.
Okay, and you mentioned how many cars can be inside?
About seven, eight cars, easy, can fit more, maybe.
With room to repair, okay. Okay, thank you.
Couple of other things to touch on.
Do you want to just come to the microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
From the newer buildings, there's been established a long list of chemicals allowed, how they gotta be stored. You'll have to make a, where you keep anything, whether it's paints or anything, anything flammable, gotta go in a flammable cabinet. Fire department will have a little drawing of where everything is located. On this list of allowed chemicals, I'm shocked that some of these are even allowed from just what they sound like, I don't even know what they are, but they're allowed in excessive household quantities, and I'll get you a copy of that, but there's a gray area, I was unprepared for this, many acts over come, where it's allowed use to repair for trucks and equipment, cars falling, something else. I don't foresee a problem on that. We're here for his resale license, he can't go to business. A lot of the chemicals and stuff, and where they're stored and stuff, you're right on, and it is addressed, it has to be addressed.
Sure, sure, sure.
And I want it, too.
Sure.
Sure. Okay, thank you for your explanation of that, that's helpful. Does anybody else have questions on this? People have, what are your thoughts on this, concerns?
If we're gonna follow the roadmap, use, get the dealer license, apply for the plates, keep the cars inside. Good to see good business come to town.
I think as we did in the other case, maybe just an explicit statement that we're not granting any relief under Section 12 for the water, just so that it's clear that if you do any of the activities that require a permit under that, this permit doesn't approve it.
We like to follow the rules.
Gotcha.
Basically, we're just giving them permission to go ask for a license.
And it's the use, it's the change in use of the property. Judy, you had mentioned something earlier about outside storage, would you want that as a condition, or that, basically, no, you were saying, no outside storage?
Right, I mean, I just echo, it's gonna come up again when you apply for your class two license anyway, but I don't think it's, it doesn't do any harm to put it in our, as a condition with us.
So one of the conditions would be no outside storage of materials?
Auto parts or related materials.
Parts or related materials, yeah. Clearly, cars can be stored out in the seven spots you have.
Did you see anything wrong?
No, no, I agree, I go even further with the other.
No, I like everything beneath, too, I'm a clean person, I like everything to be organized, and he knows, like, how to clean this place. Since I came, I pay people to clean this place, just to clean it, keep it clean.
I don't want any banners, and I'm thinking of old car dealerships, we saw this ribbon with triangle, I don't want anything other than a clean sign.
Outside, yeah.
According to the town bylaws.
Yeah.
No flashes.
Sure, sure, sure.
Clean.
Okay, so, anything else? I think that's a good condition to add in, any other conditions? Oh, I think the one that we've used before, this is, no relief under Section 12. We just feel we need to say that. Anything else that you'd want on conditions? That has to do with the storage of hazardous materials. So what we're saying is, the use is allowed, but we're not even getting into the bit about hazardous materials, because that would have to be a separate application, if he needs to go down that road.
I understand.
Okay. Okay. So at this point, you've given us the information, and we've discussed it, does, I don't think there's any more questions for board members, so at this point, do you want to close the hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Everybody's good? Okay, at the request of the applicant, does somebody want to make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Tim. Any further discussion? Any further discussion, and this is just to close the hearing, uh, no further discussion, all those in favor of closing the hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay, so next, we have, um, the actual decision. Does somebody want to make a motion to approve case number twenty-four dash five for 24 Production Road special permit under section 5B14E, with the bylaws to allow auto sales and general repairs? With the two conditions that we discussed, one being no outside storage of, uh, supplies and materials, and that this does not have, grant anything under section twelve.
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Tim, any further discussion or anything to add on that?
Could we just add repairs must be, um, performed indoors, which is part of this, uh, class two license with the outdoor storage? Thank you.
So, include third point, that repairs are to be made inside? Okay. Any other things on that? Okay, and voting on this will be the regular members, so Judy, Dave, uh, me, Bob, and Mark.
Tim seconded the motion, so could it be?
Okay, it could be Tim.
Sorry.
Thank you for getting that, okay, so it will be this end of the table. Okay.
Sorry, Mark.
Excellent.
Okay. So the motion's been made, it's been seconded, and all those in favor of approving this, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay, good luck with your new business in Walpole.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Take care.
Next, we have the minutes from the twenty-second. Did somebody have a chance to go over, uh, Bob, it looks like you did.
I have not gone over them.
Does somebody have, uh, anybody have any comments on the minutes?
I just had one, uh, comment on the second page, uh, the second full paragraph. Starts, Mr. Lee noted there was still a discrepancy over the ownership over the disputed private easement, and I, I think we were talking about the private road, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
And then the same thing in the first sentence of the next paragraph, talks about ownership of an easement as opposed to the, the road itself.
I also returned to the stage just to vote on the minutes. Put that in there somewhere. I don't think I saw it. I voted at the end on minutes.
Don't wish to have you came back?
Yeah.
Okay.
You seconded the adjournment, so...
Yeah, so I was there. I was in the audience for the rest of it.
You must have come back at some point.
I did.
That's all I have on the minutes, but if others want...
Does anybody have anything else?
They were thorough, they were good.
Okay. All the, um, does, somebody want to make a motion to approve the minutes of April twenty-second?
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by, Bob.
Can't get on the board here.
Any further discussion on the minutes? All those in favor of the minutes of April twenty-second, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, Judy abstained. Okay, anything else? So, with nothing else being heard, does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Mark. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Okay, good night.